On platforms, I'd like to thank Melinda Garfield and Charlotte Lynch for their help, and particularly Pat and Drew tonight, setting things up. First item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Emily?
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to start tonight with some nice news about our students. We want to congratulate 14 students in the Westwood High School Visual Arts Department who have been recognized by the 2023 Massachusetts Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. These are sponsored by the Boston Globe Foundation and the School of the Museum of Fine Arts at Tufts. Of those 14 students, they actually garnered 18 awards, five gold keys, three silver keys, and 10 honorable mentions. And this is on our website. There you can click on the link and go to a gallery and view all of those award-winning pieces. But I'm just going to put up here on the screen the names of the students and the categories that they were recognized in. All of the Massachusetts Gold Key Works are going to be exhibited at Reed Hall on the Tufts Medford Campus during the month of March. So you can also see several of those pieces live and in person if you'd like to go see them. So congratulations to those students who are proud of them and of their work.
Emily, would it be possible to get with this list the teachers that brought them to this?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know who the teachers were that helped develop the talents.
Sure.
Thank you.
Next, switching topics. As you know, in 2019, the Massachusetts Legislature passed a really important piece of legislation called the Student Opportunity Act. And we talked about that legislation at the time. Part of the Student Opportunity Act involves districts submitting what's called the Student Opportunity Act Plan, the SOA Plan. It's a three-year plan where districts identify some particular gap that they're interested in working on and closing. And so we submitted originally in 2020, and then in 2022 came back and we amended the plan based on how that work was going, discussed it at school committee. And in April, the district is required to submit a progress report about that work to the state. And so we've been working on that. And Abby is just going to quickly take the committee through a few slides just to update you on the progress towards meeting some of the goals in the plan.
Great. So since the 2021 school year, we've received $270,000 in supplemental funds under this particular act. And the purpose is specifically increasing student achievement. So that's important. You had to identify a subgroup of students, identify a content area, and a grade range. So the district chose students with disabilities, grade six to eight, in mathematics. And that was related to a presentation you might remember three years ago about MCAS scores at middle school in math. An important consideration is that the framework of this is implementing what are called evidence-based practices, which have a handy acronym, EBPs. That's like a new term. And your obligation upon receiving the funds is to implement at least three evidenced-based practices and report back on them. So it's all very nested in this kind of research-based model. So we identified inclusion and co-teaching as a research-based practice, school-based teaming structures for general ed and special education teachers to work together, and supporting educators to implement high-quality aligned curriculum. And the key term there is aligned to the math framework. So you can kind of hear a lot of things we've talked about over the years all kind of nesting together. So as this is a progress report, our accomplishments to date are that we have revised the schedule at the middle school, and the leadership team there has created a wind block for the express purpose of providing additional support and remediation. It's a real accomplishment. The district has purchased, and TMS is using the STAR assessment tool, which we also use for other purposes in the district, but specifically for ongoing progress monitoring three times a year in mathematics. An additional accomplishment is the reality in the logistics of having staff schedules then built to maximize what's been done here. So that means lining up the right people in front of the right kids at the right time and getting them to collaborate and work together to look at the data that's being generated out of the STAR assessment tool. And then kind of on top of the whole thing, the district has initiated the math curriculum review process, and so you can kind of see how this sits inside that. So what does the data tell us so far? So overall, we have some very nice news to share tonight. So when we look back at 2021, the students in that subgroup who are in a larger grade range than just middle school reported out from three to eight had a gap where 24% of those students were in the not-meeting expectations, specific to math at that time. When we look at 22, 16% of kids in that same band were in that category. So less kids were in that category. They're not all the same exact kids, so you have to kind of remember what we're talking about. So that kind of comparison shows some shrinking of a gap, but not necessarily impact on exactly the same kids. What we can say from that, though, is that we could figure out the rate of bounce-back post-pandemic for kids in the kids with disabilities group and kids in the all-student group, and the rate of bounce-back is faster for students with disabilities. So that's important. That's real. However, the gap persists. So if we look right now, we have sixth grade, we have a 10-point gap between all students and students with disabilities on the same test, mathematics. Seventh grade, it shrinks to two points, and then it widens up again, eighth grade to 13 points. We've talked about the eighth-grade math test over the years, and it's an important consideration because that's directly, we think, linked to alignment of curriculum. However, the reality is we've been doing a lot of hard work, both on alignment and on some of the nuts and bolts of instruction. So working to have more time for kids to get review and preview of the material, extending the amount of time and putting them in front of teachers who have good PD in math, aligning the curriculum, and then what I, my favorite bullet of this whole presentation, finding and eliminating structural and organizational obstacles that get in the way of doing those things. And so that's kind of what this is about, and we are working on that currently.
Next question. Is the alignment piece a focus of the math work in review?
Yes, it is.
And that is running through everything.
It is, absolutely.
And you'll see, we'll be up here either next month or in a month, depends on when we get to Wellner, to share out results from the math review. And I think the major recommendation for middle school is around getting new curriculum program materials for math. And that work has already started even in advance of the recommendations rolling out. So this year, the math folks at the middle school are in pilot mode, so they've worked with different curriculum to try and find something that gets better ratings in terms of its alignment and is something that will work for the six-to-eight program. So we're on it already.
Yeah. Yep. So if you click the green link at the top, you can take a grade 10 MCAS math test yourself. And we've done that over the years. I put in the scoring rubric, so you could see if you got four points, three points, two points, or one point. But I just want to, again, remind you, we're talking about very high-level outcomes at 10th grade. These are hard questions. They're frequently four-parters. They require you to both explain your thinking and do math. So for another time when you're, you know, thinking about it, you're welcome to engage yourself in that. There's 11 pages to engage with on that. But if you go back out, the good news is, and you guys remember this from previous presentations, the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade MCAS are progress monitoring tools because we have a high-stakes 10th-grade test. So the real question is, how are the kids who were in middle school in 2020, who are now in high school, some of them, doing? So we have 10th-grade MCAS results from last year. Those are available. And so we know that the all-students group for math in grade 10, that's why that's blue and the red line under it, have a progress rating from DESI of 54.7. So they are above the 50% average point. That's, you're making enough progress if you're at 50 on the progress-o-meter. And the whole group is at 54.7. So the interesting question would be, what is that same group, students with disabilities, just the smaller subgroup pulled out for the same test, and their rating is much higher? So what we know is that this gap shrinking, when it comes to 10th grade, has happened. So we've come out of that eighth-grade score deficit, and we're seeing that kids with disabilities are performing at a higher growth rate than the all-student category, which is what you would need to do to shrink a gap. And then the very nice thing is that a rising tide floats all boats. So, you know, we have an additional category called high needs, which is a conglomerate subcategory of students in a bunch of different categories, not just students with disabilities. And that rating on the 10th-grade MCAS for that subgroup, which is composed of many smaller groups of students, including all the students with disabilities, is also quite high. So that says that what we're doing is working for a variety of students with different needs, linguistically different students, students with other issues. And this is a good piece of kind of confirming data. And then finally, we just say that this past year in 10th grade, we had no students, zero, in the not-meeting expectations of the 10th-grade MCAS. So those data points we saw were shrinking. By 10th grade, we had zero students. So that's quite an accomplishment. So accountability is key. When you take the money, you have to redo this reporting, and we anticipate doing more and more of this type of reporting for the committee. We're going to be looking at disaggregated data at the school level, by grade level, like you saw tonight, classroom teacher level, as well as individual student level, and kind of toggling back and forth between those. That's really where all of this is going. And my advice would be to keep an eye on this year's grade five, because we'll have MCAS this spring. They'll go through the middle school in an uninterrupted three-year span, and you should be able to follow a cohort of real kids in real time for this. So that's pretty cool. So I hope it's helpful to see.
Thank you. Any questions at all? Abby, a couple of years ago, we noticed there was a difference in science between special ed and, and have we been able to deal with that issue at all in science?
I would have to look to tell you exactly. We have made some progress, but the amount of analysis like this, we'd have to do it to bring it back to you to tell you.
Yeah.
But yeah, we're happy to look at it for each other.
Thank you.
Thanks, Abby. Yep. Okay, switching topics. Just want to talk about the calendar for a moment. So we had one snow day. There was no snow. It was just a lot of wind, and we lost power. So not a great, not a great snow day, as it goes. So what that means is, at this point, the last day of school for kids has now been bumped to Tuesday, June 20th. The other thing, though, that we need to change on the calendar is that the day that we had the snow day was the day before the December break, which was an early release day for us, a PD day. And so we don't, the last day of school is always a half-day for kids, anyway. We do other things on that last day. So what we need to do now is drop another early release day in. And what I'm proposing here is that we put it on the Friday before the April break. So it would just be an early release schedule, just like we usually do on early release Wednesdays. I think that would work well for us, and we were thinking about where to put this in. For families, maybe leave for the airport or get on the road a little bit early was our thinking on that. So if that seems to make sense, rather than putting it on a Wednesday.
And the reason behind that is the teacher contract.
Yes, so it's related contractually to our early release days. Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah? Okay, great. Okay, and then finally, I just wanted to say a few words about, I feel like I missed something. I had on here, but now I don't see it. I just want to officially announce that we are happy to say Susan Baselli has accepted our offer to become the next Director of Student Services. She's coming to us from the Milton Public Schools, where she's currently the K-12 Administrator for Pupil Personnel Services. She has a lot of experience as a district-level administrator and a lot of knowledge around special education law, managing special ed budgets, engaging with families, making programmatic changes that support equity, and really understanding sort of the challenges faced by special ed teachers right now. So it was a thorough process. Want to thank all the people who were part of that. It was a big committee that was involved, and the candidates, we were lucky, we had wonderful candidates. And I thank all the people who took the time to kind of meet with them and to provide feedback as we made that decision.
When will she begin?
She begins July 1st, and I know she and Abby have already been in touch just to sort of talk about some transition planning and making sure that there's a smooth, smooth handoff.
So Abby, you're going to be around a little bit for help, assistance?
We're hoping Abby will take our calls, even after she believes so. Okay, and then finally, I just want to talk about a program that we're excited about. So we have a program coming up soon for all of our fifth and sixth-grade students, and we are doing a workshop for them. It's called Learning About Ourselves and Others: Building a Community of Respect, Sharing, and Understanding. And we're really talking here about some very important social-emotional skills. We think the transition from elementary school to middle school is a time when, you know, kids start to encounter a bigger community, more diverse community, and they start to develop some important skills that they're going to use throughout their lives, when they go to high school, when they go to college, when they go into the work world. And so we are taking some time to, to really work on some of those, those things with them. Our sixth graders, we wanted, we were not able to do the fifth-grade program that we had planned with them last spring, so we're including them this year. And for our fifth graders, this will serve as part of their transition to sixth grade. There is a parent version of the workshop that's going to be offered on two different dates, sorry, the same date, but at two different times, March 15th, one in the morning and then one in the evening. Students can, parents can register to attend one of those workshops. And my understanding is that the parent workshop will really allow them to like experience it for themselves. It's an interactive workshop experience, so they'll understand what's going to be happening with the students. And similarly, the consultant that we're working with is working with all the fifth and sixth-grade teachers, also on Wednesday, the 15th, to do some work with them to support kids in this work as well.
Yep.
Okay, and I think that is it. It is, that is it for the superintendent's report.
Okay, next item is our discussion items, the fiscal year '24 budget. And now to get into this, we need to declare this will be kind of a public meeting.
So if, if this works for the committee, I just have a few slides to talk about sort of what's changed since February, and then, yes, we would need to vote to move into the public budget hearing.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so as you know, the development of the FY '24 budget has been a journey, and we've been talking about this for months, but I feel like we're going to bring it into the finish here tonight. So I've had this slide up a number of times. The FY '24 budget development has been a pretty challenging year for a number of reasons that we're all familiar with at this point. But just to be a little pedantic, we've had increased costs due to inflationary pressures. Our heating fuel costs, for instance, have really skyrocketed. Our transportation contracts have gone up significantly, our special ed transportation. So we're really feeling those pressures, both this year and in terms of developing the budget for next year. As you know, we've experienced significantly increased costs in special education due to a couple of factors, unexpected tuitions, I said here, due to summer move-ins, but also due to students whose needs have changed during the year and have ended up needing an out-of-district placement mid-year. And then, of course, we've talked a lot about this, Operational Services Division. Let us know, in October, we should expect a 14% increase in private out-of-district tuitions in FY '24. That's a really staggering increase. That's, over the last couple of decades, been about 2% to 3% a year, 14%. And it kind of, that news kind of came out of nowhere. In February, I told you that we had gotten confirmation that those tuition rates had been issued and that they were fully realized. So that's a significant driver for us in Westwood. A 14% increase in private out-of-district tuitions is about a $300,000 increase. And then, of course, we have been dealing with some unknown salary increases. 85% of the total budget, our total operating budget, goes to salaries in schools. And with unsettled contracts, we're having to make assumptions, both for this year and also for next year, in order to meet budget deadlines. You know, the good news on that front is that we ratified the instructional assistance contract last month, and we have a tentative agreement with the Westwood Teachers Association, which the teachers, they had a positive ratification vote last night, which is great. And so the school committee has that vote before them tonight. We are still in negotiations with our AVA tutors. So in this context, we've been trying to develop the budget using multiple strategies. So as you know, we, we built a budget where we first increased some offsets and thought about some of our revenue assumptions in that way. We also have increased user fee revenues. We made our best assumptions about contract settlements. I did present a budget in January that was not a level services budget. It had some small reductions in there. And we have been working very collaboratively with the town to make sure that they understand the challenges that we're dealing with and our needs, and for us to understand their needs as well. We all are feeling the inflationary pressures. And to get creative, to think about, you know, what can we do in FY '24 to really maintain the high-quality education services that, that we want for kids? So in February, you'll recall that I presented a revision to the budget where I came in and said, all right, we're going to need to make further cuts. And we went from a net reduction of 1.5 FTE staff to 8.6 FTE. So it was an additional 7.1 positions. And at that time, we were in negotiations with the Westwood Teachers Association. We had made an offer. We needed to be able to honor that increase, and so we were making cuts in order to get to a balanced budget. Since that last meeting, a month ago, we got some really unexpected and really positive news. So over the February break, Governor Healy's proposed state budget was released, and the Chapter 70 estimates, it's called the cherry sheet, was released. And Chapter 70 is state aid to schools, and you're able to look up what your allocation is. And you can see here that our estimated FY '24 allocation shows an enormous increase. You may remember that I was here in February, actually, I was here in December, and then in January, and then in February, and I said, we don't know about Chapter 70 yet. Fingers crossed for Chapter 70. And I think I said out loud, let's just hope it's $200,000, $250,000. Okay? And I will say now, I was saying optimistically, let's hope. I really thought that was a long shot. And, and now I am pleased to tell you that it came in way higher than that. That is that Chapter 70 formula. It's a very opaque formula, and so it is hard to understand why our allocation has increased to the level that it did. I looked at some of our neighboring communities, and their news was not as good.
Oh, is that right?
That is, that is right. Yeah. One of our immediate neighbors, pretty much level funding. So I, I don't really know what that's about. I almost feel like I should whisper as we talk about it. So, but there it is. So what you can see is, is it's a much larger increase than we anticipated, and frankly, it is historically large, right? So if you look at where our increase has been over the years. So this is a wonderful problem to have, to get this unexpected news. And we had some immediate conversations with the Budget Steering Committee to kind of go back to the drawing board and say, you know, what does this mean? Chapter 70, it is intended as state aid to schools. That is its purpose. But it does not come directly to the school district. It flows through the municipality. And so it's a revenue that, you don't see Chapter 70 anywhere in the school district budget. You see it in the overall municipal budget as a revenue source. So we worked with them, and I'm happy to tell you that the town is really working with us so that we can incorporate this increase into our budget. And that has some wonderful impacts for us. So tonight, I am presenting a revised budget where we have incorporated this increase in Chapter 70 money. It is only estimated, but we feel fairly confident that the money will come in. This is based on the governor's proposed budget. The House will propose a budget. The Senate will propose a budget. They will have conference committees, you know. It won't be finalized until July. The fact that the state House and the legislature are sort of controlled by the same party right now, I think, I think it's going to come through. By incorporating the Chapter 70 increase, I'm now proposing a school department budget that's a 5.8% increase over FY '23. And it allows us to do a number of things. So this chart changes, and what you can see here is that, very notably, it allows us to restore the cuts that we were talking about in February, first and foremost. It's also allowing us to, it's facilitating our being able to settle the teachers' contract and to fairly compensate our teachers and our paraprofessionals, so we're able to do that as well. And it's allowing us to make some different assumptions about some of the offsets that we had talked about. So concretely, in the current proposal, I've restored the staffing cuts proposed at the February school committee meeting, and that amounts to $363,508. This budget eliminates the use of the one-time IDEA grant funding for the FY '24 paraprofessional salaries. This is something that we talked a lot about in the original proposal. We have, so the IDEA grant is a federal grant that's specifically related to special education. We do get the IDEA grant year after year, and this year, we're getting about a $16,000 increase. That's incorporated. In addition to sort of the regular IDEA grant, we have a one-time $200,000 grant that's related to COVID relief. Our intention was to use that one-time grant to help us close this fiscal year because of those unanticipated special education tuitions and to put it towards that. Before the Chapter 70 came in, originally in consultation with the town, we had decided to push that forward to FY '24 and use it as an offset to the instructional assistance salaries. And we talked a lot about that. We knew that what that would mean is that we were effectively creating a structural deficit in the budget that in FY '25, when that one-time grant funding wasn't there, would have to be backfilled by making some reductions. My proposal now is, and we have discussed this through budget steering, that we go back to the original plan of using that grant money to close this fiscal year. We incorporate $200,000 from the Chapter 70 money into the operating budget and eliminate that structural deficit and sort of reduce the liability going into FY '25. I think that is smart. Similarly, we would take $85,000 to fund the 1.2 FTE elementary adjustment counselor positions. We've been talking about these. These were positions that we created last year using one-time SRR3 grant funding. That, again, is federal COVID relief. We took half of that SRR3 grant to fund the positions this year, and we're hanging on to the other half to pay for them again next year. We had originally been thinking of those positions as, as like a stabilization response coming out of COVID. I have to be honest, we've really sort of assessed the situation and our student needs, and we think we're going to need those adjustment counselors going forward, given some of the student needs that we're seeing. And so what I had said before was, well, in FY '25, the district will have to decide the grant funding won't be there. You would have to either fund it in a different way or cut something else and reallocate. This allows us to disfund those positions through the recurring funds in the budget, and we can reallocate that SRR grant funding, one-time money to one-time expenses in the Curriculum Instruction Cost Center. So we know we're going to have a big social studies textbook adoption next year. I think that would be a very appropriate use of that one-time money. Again, just eliminating that risk in the budget. I think that will set the district up to be in a much better position going into FY '25 by not relying on these one-time grants to fund positions, which we typically don't do, right? We're only doing it because we're kind of in a pinch. So, you know, we had talked about the fact that there may be savings, or will likely be savings from positions, once Hanlon and Deerfield consolidate in FY '25, and that that savings could be reallocated to backfill those deficits. Now, what that would mean is that, that funding is available to fund the agreed-upon contractual salary increases going into FY '25. salary increases going into FY25, and it lessens the risk of having to make staffing cuts at that time. So it's just, I would say, a much more solid foundation for the budget. So that is my proposal, and I just want to make sure we all remember what this was. So we're keeping in here two reallocation of positions, right? We're reducing one gen ed elementary teacher and we're adding a full-time special education teacher for the peer program, for that peer program expansion that we've talked about for quite a while. We're reducing a high school world language position. It's currently a vacant position. That had to do with student elective choices. And adding a 1.0 floating nurse substitute. So we've talked about these. Those remain. And then these are the additional cuts that remain. So the first two were in the January iteration, reducing .5 high school instructional technology and .5 middle school instructional technology, reducing .75 FTE high school science. And then this is something we had talked about a little bit in February. And it's actually related to the contract settlement where we have adjusted some language about teaching loads, course loads for AP teachers. And we're anticipating some changes in teaching assignments as a result. So we're able to take this .4 reduction. Oh, that says science. I'm sorry, that is not science. I'm going to change that right now in real time. That's social studies. Sorry. Probably put my glasses on. I hope that says social studies. Okay. So .4 social studies teacher and also reducing .1 professional development coordinator. That's related to a particular person who's changing job roles. And then we also are adding two ABA tutors and reducing one high school administrative The revenue assumptions, this is just the review again. So we have an increase in user fees of about $216,000. That's bus fees, athletic fees, and preschool tuition. We are increasing our circuit breaker offset by $400,000. That reflects our anticipating a larger reimbursement from that special ed program next year. We're increasing our solar revenue offset by $25,000. And then this is the change here. So we're still increasing the IDEA grant offset by 16,000. That's just the recurring increase in the grant, and we're eliminating the use of that one-time money. And there is no change to the capital budget. So that's the same slide that we've looked at the last couple of.
Last five years.
The last five years, actually, yes. So no change there. So that is, that's my proposal.
So last month, Amy came in. There was a bunch of additional, particularly the high school that she suggested. So I'm going to ask again. You know what I'm going to ask. You know, in the world where universities are actually more and more science degrees than humanities, it's going the opposite direction. Do we look again, we had a month more, do we think cutting science as opposed to some other area was the best choice?
Yes. So I think Amy can answer that. I think some of that has to do with the fact that we have people in science and math who are dual certified. And so it's like, that's where the FTE is coming in the budget. But I don't know that that's where it's coming programmatically. But I will turn to Amy. Maybe it is.
If you look at the enrollment-based reductions we've made since 2019, science is the only place we didn't make them. And so it's less about taking, it's more like we're sort of catching up, honestly, to the other departments where we had some vacancies in 2019 and 2020 that we didn't fill to fund single unexpected COVID-based expenses. That was the only department that hired in 2020. And so it's sort of catching back up with everybody else.
So it's not, it's not going to change program, right? So kids will still have all of the course choices that they have?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So that's the end.
So I just wanted to make clear that in February, we were asking for a 4.5% increase. Now we're asking for a 5.8. But that difference is a result of these additional Chapter 70 funds and is not a result of either asking for more taxpayers' money or more funds from the town. I just, I just think that's a very important point.
That's correct.
That we need to make clear.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. So basically, we have incorporated $641,508, I think.
That's right.
Okay, of Chapter 70 money. And that is money that's coming from the state. And that accounts for the increase.
And that takes us to the 5.8.
And that takes us to the 5.8. Exactly. Yeah, that's right.
How are you feeling, Emma?
Oh, much better. This has been an impossible problem, and we've been talking about it since October. I mean, we've foreseen these issues for a long time, and we've been worried.
Was it good, February break?
You know, I will just say that, so it was released with trepidation. I went to look up, you know, on the online sheet, and I saw the number. I was like, I can't be writing it. And I came down to Talaema. I had to write it on a piece of paper. I couldn't even say it out loud. I was like, this is the number.
We had to check it a few times.
We checked it a few times.
Did you screenshot it?
We probably should.
Just in case it changes.
We've checked it, we've checked it multiple days. Yeah, so I think it's good.
I think it's also important to say that I attended two of the Budget Steering Meetings, and the town reached way out of their way to help us. You know, they just, they were talking about, you know, monies they needed to spend given to us just to keep us going. And if it weren't for Lema having the magic of, they couldn't believe the numbers that she could produce on every single question. But the town really reached out to help education. That's important. And this miracle money just, you know, just came out and made a difference. But they really, I was impressed with how hard they worked to find things to help us with. But I think they were, not only did Lema know everything about our budget, but their budget. It really helped an awful lot. She could answer every single question and come up with this variation of that. Just wanted to be sure we were appreciative of the town people supporting us.
Absolutely.
And I mean, we're in a better position now because we don't have these structural deficits in FY24. But it was kind of a creative approach that had been developed in concert with the town as a way to address the issues and get us to a 4.5%. So that was the best we could do at that point. And it took a good amount of work to get there to that previous 4.5%.
Yeah, and I think we, you know, we sat here last month very heavy-hearted with all of these cuts. We said if we had more money, we would give it. And we got it, and we did. And so I'm just really thankful for that because I think that really, that really helps.
I am too. I mean, the teachers absolutely deserve the increase. And I'm thrilled that we're able to make the adjustment counselors part of the salary operating budget because we need that support, and everybody knows. So that's a real one, too. So thank you so much for all your work.
Great news.
So we need to move to a public meeting to vote?
Yes, so you need, someone needs to move to open the public budget.
I need a motion to open this meeting up to a public meeting so we can proceed to vote, to have a motion to open it up for a public meeting. Second?
Second.
Okay, so. Are those in favor? I'm sure we all are. Sure, thank you. So we're basically now being asked to vote on the changes who've been following.
Well, actually, sorry. So we opened the public budget hearing. So we have to, now we're pausing for public participation just related to the budget.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on the budget? If you followed all of this stuff? We're looking for any input we can get. We have had quite a bit.
I feel like I just crossed my fingers.
Public comments at the moment? So we can proceed to vote?
Well, now you have to vote to close the public budget hearing if there's no other.
We're going to close, vote to close. A motion to close?
Simult.
So second? Are those in favor? So we close the public comment.
Do you want to vote the budget now or do you want to wait till the action?
Well, the action item, we'll vote on the budget at that time. Fine.
All right.
Thank you for all that work. Do we have a date for a public school committee?
Yes, I will look that up.
Okay, we're ready to start.
Yes, so we are going to get an update from Donna Tobin, who is our Director of Social Emotional Learning. And she wants to update the committee on some work that we've been doing to pilot SEL. We'll get to the right slides.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you.
This new role. And I'll say it's a little different. So I'm Donna Tobin. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a social emotional learning coordinator.
So I always like to start off when I'm talking about social emotional learning, or everybody calls it SEL, because in education, we like to have 8,000 acronyms for everything that we do. And so whenever I'm meeting with teachers or the public or parents, I like to just give a foundation of where we are, of what social emotional learning is in the castle framework that we use as the foundation for what we do here in Westwood. So anyway, there's a little video that talks a little bit about social emotional learning. It's about three minutes, and it will give you some information on it instead of just listening to me the whole time.
School should be where everyone feels comfortable and everyone should know that everyone's unique and you don't have to be perfect.
SEL is really about holistic development of young people.
Social emotional learning to me provides students with purpose. SEL was a great foundation and catalyst for me. It taught me to value education and value human connection.
Social emotional learning is the process by which children grow and develop their emotional lives and their relationships.
Well, social emotional learning gives the space where people can actually look at students as more than just numbers on a standardized test. We give people the space to explore who they are as people, to look at their identity, to recognize how important relationships are and what it means to be a successful human, not just a successful student.
In my classroom, they are able to share the things that are personal to them. They're able to celebrate one another's differences. They're inclusive of each other despite what race, socioeconomic, or gender they're from.
SEL promotes academic achievement in effective ways, raising test scores 11 percentile points. It reduces anxiety and distress as well. So it improves pro-social behavior and has kids get along and attend in the classroom.
SEL is rocket fuel. It is the thing that can actually accelerate the advancement of our society.
When I think about a healthy environment for my daughter, I'm looking at, are those teachers engaged? Are they showing her to be an empathetic person? When teachers are engaged and they have that engagement with the students, the students are going to excel.
The educators, the families, the community members, and the students agree that this is important.
How do we make sure that kids don't just get a segment of their life where social emotional learning is important, but they're getting that in all parts of their life?
Right now, you have untapped pool of talent. And so the idea is to leverage SEL in order to help young people realize those talents and thereby help the broader society and in fact, the world.
We really can create schools that inspire, that help students find their sense of self, that help students find their sense of purpose, to learn how to relate to one another, and to better prepare kids for wherever they choose to go in life.
Well, SEL taught you to step up when you need to, also step back when you had to. So you were creating space for yourself, but also making space for others. Now we open a new chapter. And the new chapter is inviting educators, families, young people, scholars, policymakers, inviting the whole country into the dialogue about the kind of social and emotional development we want to promote for all of our children in the future.
So I just wanted to give an update on what we're doing in the district currently. You can go to the next slide. And I don't do this work alone, so I just wanted to put some names up there because I have a bunch of teachers working with me at the elementary level on a social emotional learning committee. And then at the middle school, we really focus on some social emotional skills and advisory. So while all teachers are engaged in social emotional development, these people here have really stepped up this year and have been working a lot with me. So I wanted to just give them a shout out. So what's happening? We have used Open Circle as our social emotional learning curriculum in Westwood Public Schools for a number of years. However, in June 2021, Open Circle, which was one of the first social emotional learning curriculums out there, stopped doing their curriculum. So they discontinued their curriculum and they discontinued their professional development training. We had always sent new teachers at the elementary level to Open Circle training as part of their orientation to the Westwood Public Schools. There are so many new curriculums out there around social emotional learning that Open Circle felt like they were no longer needed, and so they stepped away. So we're transitioning to a new social emotional learning curriculum. And then we also do a same and different like me program, which is a program that was really developed by people in Westwood. It's part of our wellness committee and our special ed team. And we teach students about different disabilities at all different grade levels. So you can see the grade levels up here. So that's another program that we're really going to be working on within the next year or two. Part of the wellness review recommended looking at that program and thinking about how we teach children starting at a very young age around disabilities because students are in classes with kids with a variety of disabilities from preschool on. And so we really felt like it was important to continually, to continue to review that program. So we're going to, those are two programs that are in transition right now and two programs that we're working on. Things that we've started and that are ongoing in terms of social emotional learning is responsive classroom. So some people think like, if we're doing responsive classroom, why do we need an SEL curriculum? Responsive classroom is a program, it's really about the culture and the climate of schools and classrooms, how we treat each other, how we treat students. It doesn't have specific lessons that are targeted to practicing SEL skills and introducing students to SEL skills. So we do these things in combination. Responsive classroom is very proprietary and it can be expensive and time-consuming. So it's taken us a little bit longer than we've hoped to get all of that done. In Westwood and in many districts, there's this train the teacher model, right? So you get a few people really trained up in a particular program, and they go out and they train other teachers. Responsive classroom doesn't really allow that to happen. And so this is really programs that we have to send people to and we have to budget for. And so we've been working at that for a while, and we will continue to do that. The other thing we have are school-based practices and resources. So teachers work with our school psychologists, the adjustment counselor positions that you just refunded, which is awesome, speech and language pathologists, special education staff, to really develop lessons both for students that might have social deficits in these areas or have specific IEP goals around social pragmatics and social emotional skills, but also in the classroom with the general education population. And then we do a variety of school-wide activities, morning meeting, class meetings, lunch groups, community building activities, enrichment programs, and field trips. Emily had mentioned earlier, a program in fifth and sixth grade, learning about ourselves and our community. That's something that's happening. I know at Martha Jones, they had a hip hop assembly. The middle school does tree, did a treetop or is going to be doing it again. Treetops adventure and an escape room activity. And those are things that really help students work together. They learn how to problem solve. And so those are lifelong skills, and that's all a part of this work to help kids develop these skills that they'll be using ongoing, both in their work and their family lives. So what does that look like at the elementary level? It looks like morning meetings where kids are greeting each other by name. We feel like it's important for teachers to really build relationship with kids, to know kids. Kids should hear their name. They should hear it pronounced correctly. They should be greeted. We all like to be greeted when we walk into a space. It's about sharing, using their voice, teaching kids to stick to a topic. This is what we're talking about right now. If you've been in a kindergarten class, you know that it can go off-topic very quickly. Just getting to know each other. And so those are all conversation skills that are good for students, for life skills. And then there's an activity. It's engaging, it's cooperative, and it also learns, helps kids to learn self-control, how to use their bodies, how to think about like, oh, is it really my time to talk? Am I blurting out constantly? So again, all of those types of skills are practiced. And then also news and updates. So that's kind of the formula of a morning meeting, shared information, so that kids can come in, feel connected to their school, their community, and each other, and have a nice start to their and have a nice start to their day. So what have we been doing this year? At the elementary level, like I said, we formed an SEL leadership team. There's 18 staff members across all schools, pre-K through five. And we have done some piloting of new SEL programs. One of them that we piloted from November through January is the Everyday Speech Program. That was a program that was really a tier-two intervention program that speech and language pathologists and school psychologists used for small groups, for individual skill building. The company thought, you know what? There's a lot of good stuff here, and teachers reported that. Let's try to do a program that's really universal, that can be used with all students in all classrooms. And so we liked that aspect of it, and I got a lot of good feedback from our speech and language pathologist. So we decided to try that program. It's a, there's a lot of digital components, there are videos, there are a lot of good pieces to it. It aligns with the CASL competencies. There's an ease of use in terms of training and planning. It's not an expensive program to train people in. So those were some of the things we really liked about the pilot. These 18 staff members were doing the lessons in their classroom. Some of the challenges were, it was, it is a program that felt like, in terms of the universal application in classrooms, was almost in like a beta form, right? Some of the videos, the age range of the kids were a little bit off. There wasn't a lot of depth to some of the whole class lessons. It was repetitive, which can be really important when you're working with students to have things repeated. But this was almost redundant, wasn't always as engaging as it could be. And there are very few districts using it, Natick being one of them. And so it was difficult to get feedback on what are the results for this program when it's used in the class. So we decided to put that program on pause. We haven't said absolutely no yet, but we look at a few other things. I have to say, the company has been very responsive to collecting feedback and wanting to grow this program. They understand this is the first year they've rolled it out, and they've been really wonderful to work with. But we were like, we weren't ready to go think about adopting that program. So we went back to the drawing board, we surveyed other districts again, we got some information. We went back over the CASL has a program review guide, and they kind of scaled different programs and decided to try another program that a lot of other districts use. I'm familiar with it, there were teachers that were familiar with it, called Second Step. And so we're currently in the process of piloting that. Again, those same teachers are doing the SEL pilot. And then I also did some training with K-2 teachers just on SEL in general, and what it means and how to talk about it. And so we are in the process of starting that pilot. Like I said, it started at the beginning of March. Teachers are doing it in the classroom. We'll be reviewing the program and making recommendations for adoption of an SEL program so that this summer, we can really do some more curriculum work and think about implicit and explicit instructional practices. So a lot of social emotional skills happen all day long in every classroom. So I don't want people to ever think like, this is separate. But it's nice to have some concrete practice in the skill and introduction to it so then they can use the skills throughout the day. It's really easy to say like, this is what you should do in this situation. But when you're angry, and you're tired, and you're frustrated, and you've said something to somebody 100 times and they still haven't listened, it's really hard to stay in that moment, right? For those of you of parents, I've done this myself intellectually. I know that I'm fighting with the 12-year-old, and I cannot help myself, right? And so it's like building those skills. You would think as the SEL director, even my kids are in their 20s and 30s now, that I would maybe sometimes do a better job of this. But we all get into those moments, and so I think that that's really important to remember. So that's some of the work we're doing at the elementary level. And at the middle school, so I went to some of the faculty meetings, really getting to know, getting to know the middle school staff a little bit, which has been wonderful. And we decided to do an SEL collaborative study. So the middle school teachers are in groups of four to seven-ish, really targeting SEL topics that are of interest to them. So some people are doing book studies, and you can see the titles of the books here that they're studying during professional development time. There are also some content groups, so the advisory leaders are working together. Music and SEL, so the music team actually started to look at some texts and was reading, were reading a book before COVID hit. And so they were like, can we go back to that? We were really working on SEL in the music classroom, well, what does that look like? I said, absolutely, we can spend some PD time doing that. And then the math team came to me and said, we see math anxiety. We have kids coming into middle school, they're like, I hate math, I'm not good at it. So there was like no growth mindset. They already had determined like, they weren't good at this, they weren't going to be able to do it. And so they're really digging in how to change that mindset and how to work with kids. And where does that come from? That whole piece of like not being good at math and that anxiety. So that's what they'll be working, they started to work on, and will continue to do that through June. I've been meeting a lot more with the advisory leaders to think about like, what is the mission of advisory? How do we really build solid relationship with kids? And then thinking about the scope and sequence for like sixth, seventh, and eighth grade so that people are doing things together and not always in isolation. So that's where we are, that's a little update on social emotional learning. I know I talk fast, I was, should have said like, slow me down if I'm... Any questions?
I think it's great. I think that we, you know, we hired, we opened up this position a few years ago. We had a little bit of a rough start, we had COVID. We had, so I'm happy that you're here and that this is all happening. I think it's really important, especially coming out of COVID. I think this is probably where we see a huge area of need and the adjustment counselors and everything we've talked about over the past couple of years, so. And this is really helpful for us to know what you're, what you've been doing, so. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
First, I want to compliment, she told me she spends her lunch hour with the middle school students, so. Who's to you for that?
The first month of school, I was still... No, I still do, but the first month of school, I was in there so much, right? I'm in there a little bit less now. So I ran into a parent, and the parent said to me, she was laughing, and she said, how do you like your new relatives? I said, oh, I really like it. And she said, that's great, because my child came home and said, hey, guess what? Mrs. Tobin is the new lunch monitor at the middle school. And I just started laughing, I said, that's good, that means they're seeing me. But I thought that that was very funny.
One question, though, I mean, it's probably a long conversation, but I have to say, I feel like we've been talking about mission of advisory as long as I've ever been on the school committee. So it's a broader conversation, but it feels like we're, I don't know, I'd be interested, I'd be interested in your thoughts because I feel like we've been talking, we're not yet there, in my sense. Or is that fair? I don't know.
No, I, I think that's fair. I mean, you know, I think sometimes things change, right? So there's this idea, and so what I've been doing is really trying to find out, like, what was the history of advisory? How did it happen? Where are we now? What's working, what's not working? Not just for the advisory leaders, but the people who are supposed to do advisory, you know, they're advisory leaders, and then they're doing lessons for other people to roll out, and how does that work? So it's really a learning process for me, but also now getting into like, okay, so this is what it was, this is what it is today, and what do we want it to look like tomorrow?
And how does that relate to WIN? I mean, I know WIN is what I need, right? And so it's sort of for students to... I, I think my issue has always been, I like the goal of WIN. I just don't know how practically, if it, I feel like it just ends up being a free block. And then there's advisory as well. So I'm, I'm struggling to reconcile the two of them. So I'd love more clarity on the benefit of having both advisory and WIN, and where's the interplay, and where's their redundancy?
And I think that's a good question. I'm still learning about the middle school, obviously. But I see WIN really is around relationship building, and other people can drop in if that's okay. But relationship building in WIN is really has been...
Advisory about relationships.
Yes, advisory is about relationships, sorry. And WIN has really been more of an academic focus in terms of what kids need. So there's some reading time, and then there's really a focus on math to help with some of the stuff that was happening at the middle school with math. However, it's still about like people helping kids and building relationship with the kids. And that happens every day, all day long, in every classroom. But yes, so if a child needs something during WIN block, they're going to go to people that can help them. But the goal of WIN is academic.
Right.
And the goal of advisory is really relationship building, and how those intersect as something we continue to look at.
We should, we should put that on an agenda, we could have...
Yes, I'm sorry.
...come in and it's like, because they're pretty different, and so I, I think...
I just, my, my fear about WIN is that you need a proactive kid to really take advantage of WIN. And I think most, right?
Not entirely.
Because you have to sign up for...
So, so during WIN block...
We should ask Mike.
I know.
The intervention is, the addition of our middle school, our specialists have been instrumental into providing more like purpose and structure to providing intervention for our students. So it's what I need, but we're really guiding students into what they need. So every team operates very similar, where they designate either every day is an opportunity for a teacher to specifically pull in conference, or teams have specific days that they pull in conference by content. And so it fluctuates, and then our specialists, it's like, because we have one for each one ELA math, per grade level, target specific students and pull them during WIN time. It's also the time for our special education students to get their intervention and their needs answered. So it's no longer like the old X block where, I think that's similar to what we're talking about. These are very designated, specific targeted times for different purposes.
Okay, so it's not the case where kids have to sign up to see a teacher?
They, there are, there, there is that flexibility, but there is also like very specific conversations of who teachers want to see.
Okay, all right, that's helpful.
Great, well, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Next part of our agenda is the school committee chair update and liaison reports. I have a few comments, speed this right up. First of all, members of the school committee sit on probably five or six different liaison groups, and I get to appoint them. And I would like tonight to appoint Tori Parmley to the Disability Commission, which she represents the school committee, bring to us what they're saying, what we need to know about the Westwood Disability Commission. So I want to thank you for volunteering to, to do that.
Sure, thank you.
I will also just want to announce a couple of things. One is the psych board announced recently that we have a new poet laureate for Westwood. And Kiran Moriarty, who was a teacher at Westwood, I played a lot of a part in assessing who should get that position. And what's coming next is we will have a high school poet laureate, a middle school poet laureate, and an elementary school poet laureate. Lynn will be helping in that process to make us become a very famous town for literature. And we now have an eighth grade boy who wrote a novel during COVID that won a national book award. So we're moving right up there.
So she mentions Lynn Viti, who was just named the poet.
Yes, excuse me. Also, just to congratulate, some of our athletic teams, the boys' hockey team made it to the state tournament for the 40th year in a row, which is very unusual. The girls' hockey team made it also. The girls' basketball team was in there for a couple of games. And also just want to recognize the basketball's manager, Aron Riley Harrington. Besides that, she also is co-chair of the student, student council, and she's about to become the goaltender for the Westwood championship lacrosse team.
No pressure, Riley, no pressure.
On the way to that, good luck. The, and the boys' basketball team is now continuing on in the state tournament. So I just want to congratulate them. At a future meeting, I wonder if we could get a published list of this year's J-turms, what's being offered. It's unbelievable what this is. The teachers themselves have designed this program. Probably only high school in the country where the last week of school, kids take one course every day for a week. You get a scuba dive license, you can learn how to sail, you can climb the mountain peaks in New England, you can go to the, it's unbelievable. The only problem with it is the seniors want to come back and do it, and the parents want to do it. They say they don't want the kids, so that's, I think that's a valuable thing, yes, sir.
Just wanted to add a shout out to the track team because we have new school rubber keepers in the 4x400. We have Patrick Ditt, Olivia O'Neil, Mave Gavin, and Teia Pengley. We're also D3 champions in the 4x400. So we had a really successful indoor track season, too. And a big club for the elite gave a appearance to the boys' team tomorrow. We have fan buses if you'd like to come.
Where is the nearest spot that's in Charles Town?
Hence the need for buses. Sorry to interrupt you, I just...
No, no, thank you for saying that. The girls' track team, aren't they going someplace for a tournament that's...
We have a couple of students who are now competing in individual...
In national tournaments, that's unbelievable. The, I want to thank Emily, she did a letter that was in some of these earlier things, where she cited how Westwood, in the 350 cities and towns in Massachusetts, they look at the MCAS, how well have the kids done? So Westwood, out of 350 cities and towns, was 11th in ELA, 9th in math for the fourth grade, fifth grade, 2nd in ELA, 3rd in math, 7th in science, 6th grade, 11th in ELA, in 8th grade, 11th in science. So that's, you know, during the pandemic. So when I asked Allison, who did this work, what, what's responsible? She said, it's the teachers, the quality of our teachers. During the pandemic, they came back and they, they kept us very, very competitive. Also, niche, which I know some people don't like, they rank districts in all this, they, God knows how they do it, but in the 2023 ranking of all the communities in Massachusetts, Westwood was ranked the 10th best school system K-12. So we do need to move up to number two and three sometimes. So that's about all I have for comments, and any questions have made, anybody has?
Charlie, you asked about school committee office hours, sorry, I do have a date for that. So at our February meeting, remember, we presented on the equity audit, and we now do have the report, we will be posting that report. I could post it tomorrow, now that I think about it, I'll write myself a note. And March 27th, it's a Monday at 9:00 a.m., and again at 6:30 p.m., the district central office administrators and I hope a couple of school committee members will be available for anyone who would like to come in and talk to us about the equity audit findings. What was 6:30, was that you mean time? Yes, it's 9:00 a.m. and then 6:30. And we will send something out to, you know, all parents just announcing that date that we had said last month that we would be making that opportunity available, and that's what it will be doing.
And later tonight, we will have public participation where we listen to you for three minutes, where we don't really interaction or comments, but this public, this office hours is we interact back and forth, discuss things, and answer questions people have. So if you would like to participate, please do on that. Next is our school building project update.
Thank you. So we continue to be on schedule and on budget. We are watching a couple lead items very closely, but so far, so good, knock on wood. Next week, I think the teachers from the Hanlon and the Deerfield are going to go tour this construction site, which is very exciting, they will see firsthand where they're going to be. I was actually able to tour the site a week ago. I finally remembered to bring photos. And in fact, I'm going to show a quick drone video and then some photos. And I have to say that this drone video and the exterior photos that you're about to see, because mine were terrible, come to us from Parker Harrington. He is a Westwood resident and the chief pilot of High in the Sky Aerial Photography Company. So on his own initiative, Parker shot this footage, took the exterior photos and sent them to us, so we are very grateful to him. Westwood Media Center and our own, actually, Mr. Gogan, have also been documenting the construction. So we are incredibly thankful to all the people who are as excited about this project as we are and willing to share their events talents. And so if you will hit play, we will watch a little video. You can see, this is, this is recent, this is probably a few days ago.
Go back one slide.
And hopefully it works.
Oh, there we go.
It worked before. We do have photos if it doesn't work.
This is very anticlimactic.
It is very anticlimactic.
Emily, I'm going to suggest you repeat what you did before.
Okay, did I do before, Steve, I refreshed?
Go back to slideshow.
Go back to slideshow.
And try again.
And if this doesn't work, we'll just do the photos, and, oh.
The music is pretty dramatic.
It is very dramatic, yes, sir. So that big structure in front of you is the gym, just to orient you a little bit.
It's the main entrance right here.
Yep, that's the main entrance. So right now, he's, he's going in through the main entrance or heading toward it. That is the STEM porch, that, you can see the STEM roof and the beams. Again, this is the gym. These are the classroom wings. These are the classroom wings. Yep.
These trees, I believe, are going to be retained.
Yes, we are saving those trees. All right. And then we also have some photos. Thank you, Parker. So again, these are just some aerial shots. We can flip through these quickly. From the sky. We will get into some. So that's the view of the gym and sort of the back of the school to the right.
So the cafeteria would be here.
Yes.
Where the playground's going to be.
Yep. That's the gym again. This is the back of the classroom wings. These are the two, two of the three classroom wings. The third one is on the other side of that sort of, yes, right there.
That's the main entrance.
Yep. So we're now behind the school. This is the main entrance to the school. So this is inside the school. We're looking in the gym right now. This is in the cafeteria. That, that open space is going to be windows. And then you can see on the left, there's an elevated area that will be the performance area. This is the bathroom. So it's one of those airport style bathrooms where you walk in and the boys go to the left and the girls go to the right, or however we designate it. But it is framed. This is the hole in the, in the floor. So this is the second floor in the extended learning area. And this is a skylight. So the idea is that you would, there's a matching skylight above it in the ceiling. So the sky, so the first floor is going to be able to get natural light through these large skylights in the floors that will be surrounded by, by glass, which was a big debate.
One debate.
It is. So now we're in the library in the media center and this is the two story of windows. So we're on the first floor here. This is the second floor of the library and we're overlooking the roof of the STEM porch. And really, this is going to be the view of the school, right? You're just going to look out of the school for most of it and just see trees. And this is why we've been calling it the school in the woods because it, and you don't really get a sense of it until you're standing right there. It really is going to be pretty spectacular, especially with all the windows. And this is the beam that we signed. All of the schoolchildren at Hanlon and Deerfield signed it. All of the construction workers signed it. We had some town officials signing it. And then it was hoisted into place and the tree was placed at the top of it, which is a construction tradition to symbolize, you know, sort of the final beam setting going in and nature still being above that. And so he got a great shot of that. And this is the mighty oak. This is an oak tree that, in front of the current Hanlon School, that we are preserving because it's, it's really beautiful. And it actually looks remarkably like the one on the town, the Westwood Town Seal. And that's it. So that is, let me just get back to here. So that's the school. That's the update on the school. I also wanted to talk about, well, we have to talk about the name of the school. So as we announced last month, we thought a new school required a new name and I wanted to provide more context around that decision today. So in renaming the school or in thinking about a new name for the school, we really had two goals. One, we had to, we wanted to acknowledge that we were consolidating two schools into one. And two, we wanted to continue to honor Paul Hanlon's legacy. So on the first point, so this is a consolidation of two different schools. And we were very conscious of the fact that the Deerfield School itself is technically going away, right? Which me, and me, which means that that particular school population could experience, you know, some sense of loss and we were very sort of attuned to that. We're also aware the consolidated Deerfield into Hanlon means we're bringing together two different elementary schools with two different cultures, two different personalities. And our purpose in renaming the school was really to create one school, one community, one that doesn't distinguish between groups of children based on what school they used to go to or where they live in town. One school that students of both communities would really feel belonged to them equally. So having said that, we're very much aware that the Hanlon School was named for a distinguished member of Westwood. Paul R. Hanlon was a Westwood High School graduate, class of 1948. He was a veteran. He served in the US Navy and he was also a technician for the phone company. He and his wife Mildred raised eight children in Westwood. They had two boys and six girls. And he served our community in many capacities. He was a PTO president. He was a member of FinCom. And finally, he was a member of the select board, including serving two terms as chair. And by all accounts, Mr. Hanlon gave a tremendous amount back to Westwood and was particularly supportive of the education of our, of Westwood children. So Mr. Hanlon died in 1985 and the Pine Hill School was subsequently named after him on May 4th, 1986. We've, we've heard from a lot of people and, and some residents feel that Westwood should continue to honor his memory. Most residents do and, and we 100 absolutely percent agree with that. We should continue to honor his legacy. We want to continue to honor his legacy. So to continue that, I would like to recommend that we name the new multipurpose fields and the baseball field at the new school, the Paul R. Hanlon Athletic Complex. I'd like to point out, this dedication seems particularly appropriate because the fields are actually going to be built where the existing Hanlon is. And it just seems that that is a nice, a nice sight for these fields and for the dedication. Both Charlie and I have spoken with members of the Hanlon family and understandably, they are experiencing this chapter as a bit of a loss. And I want to acknowledge that, you know, and, and I can understand that and I, I recognize that. I'm hopeful, however, that if we dedicate the athletic complex, and that's something that we need to vote on, if we dedicate it, this dedication will serve as a continuing honor of Mr. Hanlon's legacy. And he will remain, you know, a prominent member of Westwood. He will remain in our thoughts. And his family will carry on that legacy as well. And I'm going to pause here. I've got a lot of information. I think at the, at the end of the day, you know, as a school committee, we made, we need to make a decision that's in the best interest of the students. But I would love everybody's thoughts on all of that, if there are any.
Thank you for calling the Hanlon family, both of you. I think that was a very, I'm sure it was a tough conversation and I appreciate you both. You know, as a, as a Hanlon alumni, I appreciate you reaching out to the family.
Can I interrupt and just let you know there are family members here?
Oh.
I just didn't want you to think we ignored you. We heard you when we are here to represent our family. Two of us made it and the others weren't able to come on such short notice.
Thank you. Um, do you, can we ask you to come up and would you like to say something about your, your, about Mr. Hanlon?
Well, how much time do you have? I can give you a little background on.
We'd love, we'd love that. Do you want to, will you come up to the mic?
Sure. My name is Sandra Parwan. I am number four of his eight children. I know you said he was a graduate of Westwood High. My father was born and raised in Westwood, lived his entire life here in this town. He is one of 10 children. All nine of his siblings graduated from Westwood High as well. All of he and my mom decided to raise their family here in Westwood and all eight of us graduated from Westwood High, as well as five of his grandchildren graduated from Westwood High. Westwood is a place that we call home. Unfortunately, last year we lost our youngest sibling. And in, in his time, he said, I want to be buried in Westwood. Westwood is home to all of us. Even though most of us don't live here anymore, it's still home. It's where we were born and raised. It's where we made amazing relationships. And my father loved this town. Everything he did for the town, everything he, was not for him, it was for the town. It was what he could make the town better. It's how he could make people feel comfortable. He even, in work, he was a telephone line repairman. He came to the schools and taught children, now this is back in the old days, you guys aren't this old. Telephone poles had metal spikes on the side, how they climbed them. Taught children how not to climb those, how dangerous it was. It was like so cool. Like my dad was so special because he came to the school to speak to the kids, you know? He was all about the kids. He was all about the town. He loved this town and he always tried to give back. Even when he was on the school committee, I distinctly remember them voting cotton pay for themselves because they, not the school committee, selectmen, cotton pay for themselves because they were trying to balance the budget and they needed to cut some more. And he said, well, we'll cut our pay then. I mean, he just was all about Westwood. He loved this town. And I really think that the person who came up with the description of a town, he was thinking of my dad. He, he just was very proud to be a Westwood resident and we appreciated tremendously that the town honored him. And when we had his headstone put in, we had an etching of the Hanlon School on the headstone. So if anybody's ever been to the Westwood Cemetery and wandered around, you will see the Hanlon Schools on his stone. And we just want to let you know that he was a real person and there are people who really appreciate what town has done for you.
Well, I hope.
This is my sister Mildred. She's number five.
I just wanted to add that, that education was very important to him too. We really appreciate the fact that you want to continue to honor his legacy, but we just want you to know that the school was so important because it was all about the education. He actually was earning, was trying to earn a degree to become a teacher. And he actually passed it up to become a selectman because he put the town first. But, but he, it was very important to him that, that the children got the education that they got in Westwood and you know that they do get an excellent education here and still do. So I just, I think that's all I just wanted to do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
And hopefully we will see you and more of you at the dedication of the field.
Thank you.
I've asked a few people about this and they say, you know, the young kids growing up in Westwood will say, the games at Hanlon. Now, I'll see you at Hanlon. Hanlon will be the name in the minds of the kids who play soccer, baseball and all of that, which is a part of the tribute to him and what he has contributed. So, and I think we have nothing but the highest respect for the family and what, what he did and don't want in any way disparage that. But in honoring him, the site where his school was, to keep that site alive with the kids playing there and I'm going to be at Hanlon, come see me, grandpa. I think that'll be a big compliment to him and the family too. So that's my thought.
I, you know, I agree with what you said, Maya, in terms of thinking about what the students need and just in terms of the integration of the two schools. It seems like having, having a different name would make sense. I just keep thinking that if we were to go with the Hanlon School, it would be like new Hanlon, old Hanlon, and it would be this back and forth. So I think in the spirit of moving forward, I really love your proposal of naming the athletic fields after Paul Hanlon and thank you so much for being here and for your dad's service to our community. So that's where I stand. And it was neat too, to see all the responses. A lot of people seemed to agree with the idea of the fields. I know a student, not mentioning any names, Mandy, suggested that too. So yeah, I think it's a good proposal.
All right. So with respect to the new school, the name. So as everyone recalls, we did put out a call to the community to crowdsource ideas for the names. We got almost 200 responses, which was phenomenal, from students, from teachers, from parents, alumni, residents, everybody. And we got a lot of really, really thoughtful, interesting responses. And from that, each school committee member submitted their favorites to the superintendent who compiled them into a list of finalists. And the finalists ended up being, we have six, six of them. Avery Oak Elementary, Islington Elementary, Lowell Woods Elementary School, Pine Hill Elementary School, Pine Oak Elementary School, and Shellworth Woods Elementary School. And I, I just wanted to say a few words about each of those taken from the comments that people gave us when they submitted them. So.
Did you actually put them up or no? Can you click on that?
If I click on that, I think I might.
Oh yeah, names under consideration.
Yeah.
Yep. So the Avery Oak Elementary has, and again, these are sort of lifted from the comments, has a special place in the history of Westwood dating back to the late 1800s when the town was the West Woods of Dedham. The legendary tree, it's featured prominently on the town seal, a nod to the town's past and now a symbol of strength and stability that Westwood has come to represent. It is also a nod to the natural beauty of Westwood. The land between the two existing schools consists of woods and trees, a stunning and peaceful setting for school, students to learn and grow. By naming the school after the Avery Oak, we can also celebrate this beautiful landscape and the important role that woods and open space plays in the town. Avery Oak is actually the name, the literal name of the tree that was, that's on the seal. It comes from the Avery family estate in Dedham. So that's from like the 1800s or that's, that's the history. Islington Elementary School, the community of Islington is a vibrant and inclusive community within the greater Westwood Town. Using the name Islington would create even more pride and community around a thriving part of the town that is experiencing a rebirth, which the new school exemplifies. Lowell Woods School, the school backs up to a beloved trail through Lowell Woods. Westwood's known for several excellent hiking trails within its city limits and honoring the tradition of conservation would be an excellent way to name this particular school. Pine Hill, for many decades, the current Paul Hanlon School was simply named the Pine Hill School. It was named for where it was, a little school tucked in a pine tree covered hill close to Pine Lane. There are many members of the current Westwood community who went to Pine Hill and who have wonderful memories of their time there. The new school was designed to be a school connected to nature with windows looking out over conservation land and with access to land in the outdoors. It would be fitting to return to the original, to return to the original school name and to celebrate its location in town and its connection to nature, particularly since the original name was chosen by the schoolchildren themselves, which is an interesting fact. I did not know. Pine Oak, this school was designed and is truly becoming a school in the woods. It is surrounded by pine trees and oak trees and is a nod to both the original name of the school, Pine Hill, and the mighty oak tree that stands at the center of our town crest. In fact, there is a mighty oak tree that exists in front of the current Hanlon site that we are intentionally preserving, which we had a picture of. And finally, Shuttleworth School. Hannah Shuttleworth donated her entire estate to the citizens of Dedham, including a large parcel of land expressly for the purpose of education located in the Clapper Tree Parish, which later became Westwood. The new school was built on the Shuttleworth parcel of land and naming the school after this parcel will remind Westwood residents of its connection to Dedham, its connection to the past and its commitment to education. So now we need to decide how to move forward. What are people thinking? I mean, we can, you know, discuss the names and vote on a name or if there's other ideas?
Well, I guess I have an idea since, I guess a couple of thoughts. That Pine Hill stat was pretty interesting, that the kids named, named it originally. Civic seems to be very hot in the curriculum of Massachusetts. So what about, some thought we could maybe narrow it or we could keep these six. Some thought to maybe having, you know, the kids picket. Some, I can even imagine town clerk Dottie Powers, you know, coming and counting the votes. Or something, I don't know, something, I don't know, something where you could have a little campaign, quick campaign and, you know.
Plot twist. Plot twist.
I don't know, I don't know, you know? The town clerk officially, hopefully no recount. I don't know, something like that. I don't know. I mean, they're all good names. I like they're all kind of based on the woods and that, but it's, it's hard for me to say Avery Oak versus Pine Hill first. I don't, I like them all in some ways.
They're all connected to nature. That's true.
They're all meaningful. I like that idea. I think the kids would probably have a lot of fun. Are you thinking the kids just from those two schools or were you thinking like?
I don't know. I don't know. I haven't really thought about, you know, two schools versus five. But, you know, I think it's something that's, they have just excitement. I think, I'm thinking the younger kids generally, but.
It is an interesting plot twist. I, I love it. I would say, you know, I, we're really thinking about how do we help kids from two different communities forge this new identity as one school? And the idea that those kids would choose their name, that's a really, a really neat idea. I think I.
I think we should narrow it down.
I would narrow it down a little, but I think that's a lot of choices.
Yeah.
But I don't know how Mr. Bomber or Mr. But I don't know how Mr. Bomber or Mr. Coopland feel about running.
Yeah, this is.
Look at Mr. Kay.
What do you guys think?
Absolutely.
So the kids pick the name.
Like a vote?
Yes. Well, I don't know. It's up to them.
No rank choice. One vote.
Well, if we're doing that, I think we need to give them two options.
Yeah. What about two options or three options?
That sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Do people have preferences?
I like Pine Hill. It seemed like a lot of people in the community really liked that in the survey and conversations I've had. So throw that name in the ring.
What about other people?
Yeah, I, well, I like both Pine Hill and Pine Oak actually, because I think it's, it gets in the woods piece of it. And I like how Pine Oak combines the two trees, especially since we're going to have that memorial tree there. Yeah.
Both Pine Hill and Oak and Lowell Woods was three for the vote for the students. It's had different variations of, we talked about.
Tony, what do you think? You good with that?
I like Avery Oak, but that's me. Well, the only thing, the thing with Lowell, I just, I am kind of, I know Avery may, I'm cautious of like Shuttleworth people, names. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean Shuttleworth, Avery and Lowell all are named after people.
I guess Avery was an Avery person.
Yeah, Avery, the Avery family.
Okay. So maybe, maybe, maybe it's just Pine Hill. I don't know.
Pine Hill and Pine Oak?
Sure.
You get one vote, two schools? Yeah?
You know, on the drone flyover, I sort of pointed out. So can you picture now in the current playground, there is like a little hill with some trees that the kids love to play on, right? It's sort of been like a neat little place for them to go. And when we were working with the designers, we earmarked those trees to be retained, right?
Right.
So there will be the fields. And then I think it still will be raised up a little bit.
It is. Yep.
With those trees, which I believe are pine and oak, on there. And so that's kind of a neat connection.
I'd like to just nominate those two for school election.
That's fine, ma'am.
If they feel comfortable with that.
What do you think, Maia?
No, I agree. I like the nature. I like that, you know, that Pine Hill is a nod to the past, Pine Oak is a nod to the past and to the, to the town itself. I think those are very good choices.
And then one came from the students themselves.
Well, yeah, Pine Hill came from the students originally. So.
Why don't we just say, hopefully formal, we'll go ahead with a vote. How about acting on the athletic complex?
Yeah. So why don't, okay, so I move that we separate the naming process of the new school into two parts. First, we dedicate the playing field complex to the memory of Paul R. Hanlon. And second, we delegate the decision of the name of the new elementary school, either Pine Hill Elementary School or Pine Oak Elementary School, to the elementary students in Westwood.
Well, the students just.
Students at Deerfield and Hanlon.
Wait a second with that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right.
Next item is the policy.
Let's do it quick. Quick votes. This isn't a presidential election.
The architect is requiring a quick vote. We need to get the signage package in. We've got till the end of March.
The policy review subcommittee update?
Nothing. We are waiting to schedule our next meeting. I think last meeting, I updated the group that we were working through Section I. It's a rather comprehensive section, so we'll pick that back up. But I do want to say thank you to Charlie and acknowledge all of his work getting a policy off the ground regarding idling outside while, you know, parents or caregivers or whatever are waiting for pickup. So, thank you.
Also want to thank the legislative council. We have a co-chair here today offering advice to us. And I think it's good direction how our student legislative council can advise us on idling and what signs should there be out there for cars that are waiting, spewing toxic chemicals into the air, causing asthma and all kinds of problems. And so we're trying to, the kids are going to help educate us on how to educate their parents and others that may be waiting in line. So that will be possibly a new policy with advice coming from the students. They have other areas of advice they're giving us to on their own use of cars. So I want to also thank the legislative council for your help.
Thank you both.
Next item is superintendent search update.
So it's, I mean, we're on track on the timeline. You know, I think for the community, you know, I think we'll still on time to buy our goal by the end of March to have a new superintendent, which is a lot of activity in the next few weeks, particularly for the public. There will be, once we have finalists, those will be announced publicly. And then there will be opportunities probably the week of March 20th or early part of March 27th, that we can actually come and get some of the candidates, finalists for superintendent. You know, they typically do site visits, they meet with, you know, staff, they meet with students, they meet with parents. And then we will also have formal interviews as well for the school committee. And we should just, we actually should probably start thinking about recording that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, actually.
Because actually that's coming up. So there'll be that. So we're still on track. The more to come, you should be hearing from that. And we look forward to everyone participating as well and getting feedback.
How many candidates did you end up with?
I don't know if we're allowed to say.
Oh, you're not.
Well, it's a confidential process. Are we allowed to say?
You can say how many you have.
Oh, okay. We had 25.
Stop it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have expected that at all.
Yeah. No.
It's amazing.
Yeah. So we're narrowing it down to a certain number of interviews.
Okay.
And then from there, the selection committee is going to move three forward to be finalists and that's who becomes public.
Got it.
But no, 20, we were really, really pleased with the, with the number of applicants. It was, there's a lot of superintendent searches going on right now. So we were.
So I thought it would be less. Yeah.
So we expect to possibly be making a decision in April, do you think that's?
By the end of March.
By the end of March.
Perfect. Thank you both for.
Yeah, thank you.
Your leadership and taking us again into an important area. This is part of the program. We have public participation. We ask anybody in the audience to come forward, give their name and address and talk to us. We don't respond to you at this stage, but we'll have the office hours later for that interaction. So if you could just raise your hand if you'd like to come up and spend three minutes educating us. Yes, please?
Hi. Good to see you all. I'm Joanna French and I live at 3 Cranston Avenue here in Westwood. I'm here with my husband and my two boys are at home. We all attend, they all attend Westwood Schools. I remember attending the December school committee meeting where you, Emily, outlined so thoroughly all the incredible financial challenges the district was facing in the coming year as a result of really just a perfect storm of external factors from the $300,000 increase to out of district tuition costs, a whopping 30% increase to heat our buildings, unanticipated out of district placements, as well as the inflationary pressures that we're all facing. I also attended school committee office hours where we discussed how we'd be facing these exact same problems even regardless of the new school building. And in fact, we'd have bigger problems since we'd have to be addressing a slew of deferred maintenance projects for both those schools. And in January, I met again with you, Emily, and the other PTO presidents from around the district where we walked through the budget process yet again, explaining how Prop 2 and 1/2 hamstrings our town and our ability to increase revenue through taxes. I left all of these meetings thinking there's got to be something us residents can do. I learned about the Chapter 70 program and specifically the Student Opportunity Act and how it promised an influx of state aid to public schools. But unfortunately, it was way behind funding schedule, meaning that districts around the state hadn't yet received the funds the law had required. When I realized this, I drafted emails and I created phone call scripts and I reached out to our community to implore them to contact our state reps and our new governor to ask them to fully fund this program. And my call to action reached more than 1,000 members of our community and it worked. And when I followed up with Representative McMurtry and Senator Rush's chiefs of staff, both of whom said they had received dozens of phone calls and dozens of emails from Westwood residents encouraging this action. And then on February 16th, Governor Healy released her proposed budget and her proposal includes an increase in funding through 4K through 12 schools, reflecting a commitment to fund the Student Opportunity Act. Westwood is among several communities slated to receive significant, significantly more state aid than we anticipated. So tonight, I'm here to say that local advocacy works and I want to publicly thank the community for stepping up and supporting our schools, for supporting our teachers, and for supporting our children by taking action when action was needed. These funds will have a profound impact on our children and the impact is already apparent in tonight's budget. And I see that the committee is set to ratify the WTA collective bargaining agreement and vote to approve the FY '24 budgets. And I encourage the committee to vote yes on both of these budgets. I also ask those gathered and those listening to attend town meeting on Monday, May 1st and vote in favor of the town budget. Voting in favor of the budget is an important step in receiving these funds from the state. Thank you again to the community for taking action and for supporting our schools. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to comment, give us advice? Yes, please?
I know no one knows who I am. Eileen Segal, 257 Alder Road. I just wanted to come up and, I'm feeling so warm and fuzzy right now. Just after, well, usually I come up and I ask hard questions and I, I offer support, but I push behind it. And I just, I just thank you for all the hours you guys have put in with the teachers contract, with the budget. I come to these meetings, I see what you present, I see the work you do. I can't imagine all the hours that go in and, Lema, God bless you, at all meetings, you always had an answer for everything. And then hearing about, I didn't, I know we had an SEO. Donna, what's your title again? Director. Thanks.
As a coordinator.
Fake coordinator. But actually seeing the presentation and seeing that these children, our children are getting the things they need. And again, I have a very specific focus as a public school special educator, but seeing that and that we're doing something about it and hearing that 18 staff members volunteered to be part of this program and gave their time and all this thought is going into our children. And also that the Mills, and I know you don't know what Winblock is, Maia, but it's awesome.
I know what it is.
No, no, no. You know what I mean. I know you know what it is, but like how it's used.
Yeah.
And the advisory, I just, I got, I'm just so glad that this is where Hannah Claire's going to go to school. And I'm just really grateful for all the work, Dori, Maia, Amanda, Tony, Charlie, that you guys put into it. And again, Charlie, you said after what the Scholastic Art winners were posted, you said, we have to figure out who their teachers were and thank them. I mean, and it's just wonderful to have a school committee that works so hard and recognizes that, you know, one of the reasons our children do so well is that people we have leaving them every day in the classroom. So that's all. I just felt really warm and fuzzy. You want to say thanks because I can be demanding sometimes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Well, thank you all for your comments. Emily just reminded me, so March 27th will be a public opportunity to meet with us once at nine o'clock in the morning and a second time at 6:30 at night, based on your hours. But it's our office hours. We get a lot of interaction and valuable feedback at that time. The next is our action item section, only eight sections to go through. I know they're all important, but.
How's the dog, Charlie?
Okay, first off, approval of the February 9th, 2023 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor, just raise your hands. Fast, okay. Vote to approve a new scholarship.
Yes. Sorry. You guys are moving too fast. I didn't get to that section. So a retired high school teacher, Carol Rosengard, who's a special educator for many, many years here, has approached us about a new scholarship and it is the Westwood Achievement Award for grit and determination. The description of the award says the award is presented to a student who has demonstrated grit and resilience during their high school career who is pursuing an undergraduate degree either in the field of education or social services. It's a one-time scholarship for this year's graduating class of $1,000 and that it would be reviewed for renewal on an annual basis. And a vote of the school committee is required to set up the scholarship.
That's a great name, The Grit.
I liked it.
Do I have a motion to approve this scholarship fund?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Thank you very much to Carol.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Vote to approve the robotics field trip, or trips.
You have some information in your packet about two possible field trips. I think this has to do with, the team will have to qualify for the events, but thinking positively. So for both of the events, this really will be supervised by parent volunteers who would be people who have queries on file with the district. The cost will be paid for the families of the students if they choose to attend. You can see that they're, the first one is in Springfield from April 5th to 8th. But the second one is actually in Houston, Texas. That's for the first robotics competition, World Championship. So that's very exciting. The, that event falls during the April vacation, so the students would not be missing school to attend that event. And it would be approximately 10 students who are attending if they qualify.
That's, so what we'd like to do is get the school committee approval for this program proceeding for the kids that they'll be paying for themselves. They'll have parents supporting them. I have a motion to approve it?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Maybe at one of our school committee meetings we could have a demonstration.
Yeah, sure.
From some of the students on their, their projects. The vote to authorize the rooftop solar panels and designate the PPA signatory, then we have authorized panels on all of our schools. So it'll just be a matter of approving that for the new school.
Correct. And there's, I think, a specific motion that I can make.
Yep.
So I moved a motion to permit the installation of solar panels on the roof of the new elementary school and to designate the school superintendent as the authorized signatory for the district to enter into a power purchasing agreement contingent upon the select board negotiating an agreement that satisfactorily meets the needs of the district.
Wait a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to determine the new elementary school name. We've already discussed that and we've got the, getting a vote out from our students. Vote to ratify the WTA collective bargaining agreement.
Yep. So this is, this is, as Emily mentioned, the, we came to a tentative agreement with the WTA. They ratified it last night and we are, I am thrilled to make the motion to ratify it. So I will make that motion. Motion to approve ratification of the 2022 to 2026 collective bargaining agreement between the Westwood Teachers Association and the Westwood School Committee according to the terms articulated in the tentative agreement dated February 27th, 2023.
Wait a second with that motion?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Really want to thank Maia and Tony for all of the extra time you put in and Emily and all of the staff.
I'd like to thank the Emily, Lema, Abby, Allison, and the WTA and specifically, it was, you know, I think that at the end of the day, we all worked together to come to a resolution and very respectful of the WTA and looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We all put great respect for what they've done. And thank you for, they also realized so difficult it was, all of the things out of our control this year too. Next, the vote to approve the fiscal year 24 operating and capital budgets.
Can you read this one? This one I have to?
I think so.
I always like to do the budget one.
Yeah, you can do it.
I like the money one. All right. Motion to approve the Westwood Public Schools fiscal year 24 operating budget, the amount of $54,743,565. And the fiscal year 24 capital budget, the amount of $1,017,000.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
A vote to authorize the submission of a SOI to the Mass State Building Authority for the Sheehan School.
We're trying again.
Third time.
It's a charm.
Third time. This is actually a very formal motion that I included the MSBA has specific requirements for the motion. So that's.
Yes. So having convened in an open meeting on March 9th, 2023, prior, that's, yes, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, Westwood School Committee has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form for the Sheehan Elementary School located at 549 Pond Street, Westwood, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority five, replacement renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy. conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. And priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Do I have a second?
You got it, second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any new business? I'd like to have one big new business started.
I just have one thing. We do have a community member who's a former Westwood teacher who has helped with writing a bill in concert with Representative McMurtry, in order to help with education around the needs of special education students. And I would like to propose that we invite that community member to come and give an update, because it would, should it pass, and I think it's moving to committee in the next month or so, would, would impact all districts in Massachusetts, including ours, so.
Could we invite her to the next meeting? What do you think, committee?
Yeah, whatever makes sense, I mean, I don't, whatever, makes sense within the calendar, I don't know what's the next name, but yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Remove.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Like, thank Holly again for getting us together, keeping us organized. Thank you, Holly, please.
Thanks, Holly.